Recording as well.
Okay, I would like to welcome everybody to the Monday, August 23rd, 2021 Barrington Select Board Meeting. To start the meeting, we're gonna do a call to order. Roll call vote, starting with select person there.
Daniel A. 334, Old Conker, Trump, Ike.
George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive.
Jim Sikosha, 21 James Henry Drive. Now if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first up on the list is the Agenda Review and Approval. Does the board have any discussion on this?
Do you accept items to go on to the next agenda, or do we cover that in a different portion? Because I don't remember how that was to be done.
Didn't we tackle that on the last meeting?
So George, you can send me any topics you'd like to see on the September 13th Agenda. We can work with it and I'll key in the chair.
All right, I'll see you Monday.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's my question. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, do we have any other discussion, or do we have a motion from the board?
Well, I got a question.
Okay, select person there.
Jack, you guys, I think, oath tonight, is he online or anything?
Select person there, Mr. Gale will take his oath with the town clerk's office. That's just the listing of the documents the Select Board had signed previously. So he was appointed at the last meeting and his oath was signed. So we're just listing it so it's transparent out in the public.
All right, thank you. Almost.
Second.
We got a, we got a motion from Dan and a second from George. Roll call vote.
Air eye.
Bailey eye.
Sikosha eye. Okay. Next up is a public hearing. No, where are we at?
Yes, it was number four.
Yeah. Yeah, public hearing. The acceptance of the Barrington Fire Association Funds.
So this is simply the statutory process required to accept unanticipated revenue. It's prescribed in RSA 31,95-b. One of the requirements for any amount over $10,000 is that this hearing is noticed in the newspaper. It was noticed in the August 12th edition of Foster's. And this allows the town to accept and expend the $18,816.94 towards the purchase of the UTV and equipment. You'll remember that was originally 16,000 and the groups, or the group graciously voted to increase the amount due to unforeseen cost increases of the equipment and the device, or the vehicle and equipment.
Dan.
I'll make the motion. I'm glad to accept the money and I appreciate the hard work.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, roll call vote.
Air eye.
Bailey eye.
Sikosha eye.
Hope, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, select person there.
Okay, well, before we continue, I would like to open up a public comment. If you're viewing electronically, please raise your hand.
This public comment is limited to the topic of the public hearing, which is the acceptance of the Fire Association Funds.
Okay, I made a mistake.
Thank you.
Okay, so can, hold on chief.
I just wanted to, for people in the audience that listen to this, part of the problem, what we ran into is a price increase. But the other thing was the cost of shipping some of that stuff out of California. So a lot of it was, had to do with, again, increased prices over the last seven or eight months. But we found shipping the equipment, the two skid units coming from California were what triggered the majority of the price increase.
Thank you. We thank the Association for us.
Very much so.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns?
The only comment I'm gonna make is I'm really glad they worked with us. They really stepped right up when it was necessary. It really is nice.
Okay, okay, we had a motion from select person there.
And then we had a vote, so.
We're all set.
And then we're gonna have to do another public camera on this one, too.
Yep. Okay, so moving on to assurance of building permit on Long Shores Drive, a private road for Blue Han Haggerty, map 102, lot 77.
Like to make a motion?
Hold on. I know we have John Huckins on here and we were waiting for the applicant to submit the required plot plan for John to review. John, can you touch on this a little bit?
Yeah, the plot plan they sent does show that it complies with the setback. And what the guy actually did was he put benchmarks in and gave dimensions off of that because I have to have a foundation certification once that foundation does go in.
Okay, and you had adequate time to review and it looks good to you?
Yeah.
Select person there.
Yeah, it's in the building envelope and everything. Give me a bow.
Okay, select person Bailey.
If I recall correctly, we asked them to give us a certified plot plan and we have not received that as of yet. We do not have a certified plot plan. We have received two other plans that clearly state this is not to be used for that particular purpose. And we're asking us to circumvent what our rules are, and I don't think we should do this. I think this should either be denied, or it should be postponed to the next meeting and given him another chance to provide us with a plot plan. As stated right here on, on this right here, it's not for that use. So we don't have a complete package from this individual.
Yeah, it's a planned.
Hold on, hold on, John. Let George finish, please.
And the, and the other thing is, is how can we have a certified plot plan? Does that mean they have been building already and they've had, the foundation is already in for the, for us to get the foundation plan? We've got somebody put a stamp on something that's either built without approval from this board, or it's a plot plan that's done without taking proper measurements because it's not there. So either way you look at it, this can't make it work because it's not what we looked for. We asked for a certified plot plan. We didn't get it because this denotes that it's not a plot plan. How can it be used for one? Thank you.
Okay. Select person there.
Being a builder and stuff, and then if there've been the benchmarks and they're within the envelope, that's good enough for me to go in there and work there. And then, once I get it in, then they come back and certify it, George. I could put it in the wrong place.
Dan, I, I, I know that.
Excuse me, guys. We, we got your point, Dan. We got George's point. I would like to give John a chance to rebuttal to George's comments and concerns.
Yeah, a certified plot plan is a plan that shows they can put the house in and meet the setbacks because it's letting makeup. Once the foundation goes in, then I get a foundation certification that shows the exact location of it. That is actually showing where they're gonna put it. That's the reason why they can't say that it's certi, it's a certi, a foundation certification because it's not there. They're just showing that it's in and that's a certified plot plan. They're two different things. They sound similar, but they're two different things.
Mr. Chairman, it states right on here, putting certification of lot 77, tax map 102. That's what this says and that's what he put his stamp on. And we haven't had it in there, so what John says is correct, but this is incorrect because it's not, nothing in the ground to give us a certification for. That's why I asked them, either we deny it, or I suggest that we move it on for the next meeting and give them a chance to provide us with the material we're supposed to have. I know at the last meeting, that's what we said and we don't have it yet.
Okay, well, we are a board of five. Today we are four. Is there any other comments or concerns?
I'll make the motion to accept it. Uninformation invited.
Well, before that, we have to go to public comment. So I'd like to open up public comment. For those who are chiming in electronically, we have Tiffany here and myself. Looking to see if anybody's gonna chime in via Microsoft Teams or via phone. Give it 30 seconds and we'll go from there. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close public comments. We have a motion from select person there. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second from select person Mantrack. Roll call vote.
Air eye.
Bailey, no.
Sikosha eye.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify with Mr. Air that his motion includes the conditions 1 through 8 listed in the Town Administrator's Report dated August 23rd.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I must say to the rest of the board members that voted yes on this, you completely erased the rules of the town. People had voted for to have this item taken care of. This clearly states that it is not a plot plan. And it's not a legal document, so I have said that. I'd like to make sure that goes into the record because he has not provided it and we did, and we did err in the fact of approving this. Thank you.
Okay. Onto the consent agenda. This requires a unanimous approval.
We approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a select person, uh, second from select person Bailey. Roll call vote.
Air eye.
Sikosha eye. Agenda is approved.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note that there was one small correction to the minutes noted by select person Mantrack. And that correction, nonsubstantial, will be included in the approved minutes.
Okay, this is the part of meeting where we have appointments, but there's no appointments on our agenda. Nothing came in last minute, correct? Okay, this is gonna move us on to public comment. And we have yours truly, Chief Walker, coming up.
I apologize for this not getting on the agenda, but I was approached today by Cubscope, Mac 258. Traditionally, the last five or six years, they've done a membership drive and they've used the park slash side yard of the Public Safety Building. It's usually done on, that's kind of early September Saturday morning. There's somebody from the fire department that's not on duty there so that if they need to go and use the bathroom or something. And they approached me today. They'd like to do it on Saturday, September 11th, from probably either 9:00 noon or 10:00 to 1:00 or something like that. So I'm, you know, because it's a town building, I'm looking for you folks to bless them to allow them to do that.
Can I make a comment on it? Could they be clearly posted what's going on over there? So someone's coming out of the dump, there's no confusion.
Yeah. They usually stay over off of the smoking signs set up, saying some of the stuff the scouts do. So the kids that are interested in coming in can see what they're doing, so.
Yeah, I don't see that being a problem.
No.
Anybody have any other comments on this?
It's a good idea.
Okay, you guys are all set.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Uh, you see anything coming in on the world wide web? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Okay, on to staff reports. Administrator McIver.
Yes, thank you. I read through the August work anniversaries at the first meeting in August, so I won't belabor that point. I will just extend some appreciation to the patients of our public safety personnel, both police and fire, over the last few days. Obviously, anybody that's driven by Franklin Pierce Highway, seen the new blacktop in the parking lot there. And they were, you know, the paving window is, is always kind of a question mark and they worked hard to work out the logistics to make sure that that could happen. Also, huge appreciation to the road agent Mark Morrow and Advance for getting that done, working through the weekend to get that facility buttoned up so we can return to normal operations. So a lot of cooperation from a lot of folks and I am glad that we have that project behind us and can move forward to other things. That's all I have. Thank you.
How about me, moving the town lands to my property Saturday?
That's very gracious, select person there. Very gracious.
Okay, Administrator Cottle. Okay, well, let's keep a good thing rolling while we're on it. That brings up old business. Ultra Terrain Vehicle Award Update. I called Connor this, this afternoon and we had discussed what gone on, where we had originally awarded the purchase of the UTV to Venture Powersports. Chief, would you like to come up? And while Chief Walker is coming up, when I was the board, as I was reviewing this, I had the question, why R E P for the trailer? Long of the short is there, you just correct me if I'm wrong, chief, our, I forget his name, who put the package together originally?
John Janelle.
John Janelle, he had put the package together. He gathered all the information, whether it's UTV, trailer, skids, everything. And what he had did was he had packaged everything together. So if Venture didn't have a trailer, but there was two people that bid a trailer, he picked the best trailer and he put that with Venture's package. So what he was trying to do was save the board some work and by putting the packages together so that it was easier for us to see the apples-to-apples packages. If you, do you have anything else to add, chief?
No, that, that's 100% correct and, and again, it's 100% my fault. Captain Janelle did a good job, achieved together for me. I mistakenly forgot to realize that not everybody, Venture didn't bid everything. And the reason, there is a lower bid on the trailer, but the, it didn't meet the spec. We wanted a steel trailer. The lower bid came in for an aluminum trailer. And R E P was the low bid on a steel trailer.
Gotcha. Any questions, concern from the board?
We amend the Ultra Terrain Vehicle Bid Award to the $24,622.94 for the Power Sports, for the UTV tracks, roof and windshield, $4,195 to R E P Enterprises for the trailer, and up to $5,999 to CBT Fire Pump Manufacturing for the skids, for a total of up to $34,816.94.
Do we have a second? Okay, roll call vote.
Air eye.
Sikosha eye.
We, we thank you very much for allowing us to get through this process and on getting that stuff ordered.
We're excited to have a new addition, a new tool to help out the, the visitors and residents of the town of Barrington.
You're very much appreciated.
Okay, on to 21 tax deeding. Each year, the tax collector must present deeds to the Select Board for properties which have outstanding balances back three or more years. In 2021, a property is eligible for tax deeding if it has an unpaid balance on the 2018 lease. Do we have any discussion on this board? Any questions, concerns? Okay, do I have a motion to? Okay, we have a motion from select person there to authorize the assurance of a 2021 deed waiver for map 23, lot 46. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Air eye.
Sikosha eye.
And Mr. Chair, if I could, we're fortunate to have a few more properties come off the deed list that have come in and paid today. The deed date is the 26th. We're hopeful that, well, we're hopeful that the remaining properties on the list will come forward and pay the amount due to stave off deeding on August 26th. So we're, we're hopeful, glad the list is shrinking and it definitely continues with the trend. I know I've talked a lot about the financial stability in the town of Barrington. We've seen some of the lowest numbers on tax delinquency. People paying their taxes late the last year and a half. It's continued to decrease. Same thing with deeding. You know, this list was three times as long a couple of years ago. And so a lot of credit goes to the tax collector to work with taxpayers, to take, paying their taxes seriously, get them on plans so they pay their bills before it goes to lien or before it goes to deed. So I'm very glad with where we are. Like I said, I'm hopeful everybody will pay, but very likely will have a small handful that will, will go to deed. The town will take ownership and proceed accordingly. Thank you.
Excellent. Next on the list is Recreation Slide Bid Award. You guys ready for this big news? Bids for the surplus equipment were due at noon on Monday, August 23rd, 2021. Details about the advertisement and process can be found on the Barrington Town website. The bids were opened 1:00 PM on Monday, August 23rd. And we need a couple of motions to award some bids for the slides from the recreation department.
You have a dollar amount.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Unfortunately, we expected to open bids at 1 o'clock today, but we didn't receive any. So, so kinda sad news there. Jesse had our esteemed Recreation Director, had a lot of residents reach out to her when they had seen the slides and said, hey, you know, can we buy them? And she sent the information out. We advertised it, but, but nobody coughed up a sealed bid to buy them. So I think the board has a couple of options. In addition to extending the advertisement of the bid, we also, we actually made contact with a farm, a local farm that experienced some recent hardship that was looking for some slides. This is Scamin Farm. You might remember about a year ago, they had a fire. They, longer than a year ago. Okay, so. Scamin, S-C-H.
What road is it on?
It's on Stratum.
Oh, it's in Stratum?
But they're looking for a couple of slides. And so if, if the Select Board was feeling generous, the Select Board could authorize, you know, donating essentially, disposing of the slides to the Scamin Farm, seeing that we didn't have any bids. I know the Recreation Director's on, so I think it'd be appropriate to give her a chance to weigh in, but it's up to the Select Board how we proceed.
Before we jump over this, I don't think this has to be wanted, drawn out. I would, I would like to run this by the board. That's gonna be sealed. We need to be put in an envelope, Dan. Mr. Mr. Air had put down a bid for the slides, but I would like to see if the board is up to, and we can give Jesse the power to either donate the slides or, or get them to a family or, you know, another municipality in need. Do you guys agree with that?
So moved.
I'll make a motion.
I just did.
No, can I direct to George, please?
Select person there.
I'd like to make a motion to donate the slides to the people in Stratum, and I'm willing to donate $100 toward the Recreation Fund.
Okay, very noble, and we can accept that, no problem, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we need a second. Seconded by select person Bailey.
Air eye.
Sikosha eye. Jesse.
Sorry, I was just trying to unmute. I didn't want to interrupt anybody, but thank you very much, Dan. That is very, very appreciative, so thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. See, Dan does have a kind, a kind heart, you know, a boat as big as a country mile wide. Okay, now we are, that brings us on to new business. First up on the list is Building Department Vehicle Replacements. We have John Huckins, our building official on. Would you like to tell us a little bit about what you found? Mr. Huckins?
Yeah, okay. I reached, I took, the car that we have now, I was looking at getting something equivalent to that. And it was Ford Explorer, the Knox from Chevy and the, the other one, that was a GMC, the Terrain. They're all considered equal vehicles. And I needed all-wheel-drive because of places that we go in town. So I asked every one of the dealers on that list to supply me with a base model car that has all-wheel-drive and I put in order of pricing that came back. The lowest one was considered with, was directly from the owner of the company. The next two were my contract bids that were done and you notice the next two exactly the same amount of money and they're also 2022 models.
Okay. My, my comments here to you is, you know, you as well as I know, you know, and I'm in the trades. I meet with multiple inspectors, different municipalities, different states. I do see the more established towns going either towards hybrid cars. We're not at, at an electric level by any means, but if we could find something that's not an SUV, because if we, if we look at the practical standpoint, I'm not sure if you find yourself with, you know, at four, you know, three or four passengers that will go to you with a job site or if you have to bring somebody. But I think this vehicle is usually used for one person to go to different inspections and, you know, handle the, the town business. So I would like to see, you know, if the, the board would want to entertain almost an all-wheel-drive car as well to see if we can get that down a little bit cheaper and maybe we can get a little bit more, better gas mileage, a little more economical. Those are my comments. Questions, concerns? Select person there.
Well, sometimes you have to bring a ladder, sometimes to do inspections and so. I'm not, well, yeah, where, yeah, they do, but I think they need to bring a ladder sometimes. And I brought up the idea to Connor about the police rotating vehicles. There's a problem with building inspector.
We're, we're not on the police right now.
I know, I'm just saying. Buy your vehicle. They're not, they only put 8,000 to 10,000 miles a year on it. They rust out before they do it. So if we can get in a cycle, and when the police have a vehicle come up, the SUVs are coming up in another four years. But if it was there, the building department can get a used SUV from the police department. Police will get a new one. And then in another, when another rotation comes up, so they won't be rusting out. Because the mile is not issued.
I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, you know, for, for when it maybe comes out.
Right now, it's not, it won't work right now. I don't.
Sure.
So the vehicle that is currently going out on rotation right now for the Dodge that is coming in. So, the vehicle that is currently going out on rotation right now for the Dodge that is coming in, that you guys approved a little bit ago, inspection is due in September. Dodge won't be in till probably December. I'm going to ground that vehicle because it won't take a sticker. It's making noises that I can't even tell you what it is right now. The brakes are bucking, transmission slipping, got a hundred and twenty-three thousand on it. Not a good alternative for John. If you want to wait until next year, which I don't think John does, because I think his vehicle may be in the same spot as mine, the next vehicle to go next year is the unit two, which is a twenty thirteen Ford Taurus, off the top of my head, hundred and twenty-ish, give or take, hundred and twelve-ish.
All wheel drive?
All wheel drive, all wheel drive. So, the current Explorer that is going out isn't, is not really an option, and it's the one that the deer hit, so the fender's still bent up and stuff.
Thank you, Chief.
And Mr. Chair, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to address Dan. Dan, I, I love the creativeness, and I do agree with something like that when the time is right for it. I'm so for that.
I know the time wasn't right.
Yeah, time's not right, but I do agree with that. Select person Bailey, and then we'll afterwards.
It seems that we've had this discussion before, gentlemen, about buying certain things and not buying certain things, and we came to the conclusion that we really have to depend upon what our department heads have brought forward, and I know that John has put a lot of work into this and figured out the vehicle that he's, would best suit his business with the price that we're going to get. If I recall, I think it's twenty-three hundred dollars more he's got to put into that car in order to get it running, and I don't know if that would sticker it or not, because I'm not a mechanic that does the stickering. But I feel that, as a comment was made about a ladder, which you're also going to have other pieces of equipment he's going to have with him. He might have meters, he might have other devices to take with him. He also might have to have a pair of boots and a raincoat and other stuff that fits in the car. So, I think this vehicle would be suitable, Mister Chairman, so I really feel that careful consideration on my part, I, I feel that I would support this. Thank you.
Okay. Connor?
Yes, thank you. To select person Air's point, a lot of communities build up a rotation, whether it's their police department or building department or other code. And for that to work in Barrington, it would require a rotation that takes a cruiser out of frontline service for the police department at, say, sixty thousand miles. So, not when they're their end of their useful life in the police department. And so, I think it is something that created, that the town should consider. You know, it, as long as we buy a new one now in ten years, when, when we will likely need to replace the vehicle again. So, I think it's point well taken, worth looking into, and if we proceed this direction, we've got some time to work out the scheduling and logistics. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm not doubting that we don't need, that we need to replace this vehicle.
Another thing, don't you stick a shot, you take that number, I'll use to say twenty-five grand, divide that by ten. Probably twenty-five hundred.
I don't know. I would like to see, because I would like to ask a question to, to Mister Huckings. Do you find yourself strapping an extension ladder onto the current Ford Escape? Do, are you lifting that you and or are part-time inspector? Are you guys going up on to stuff and, you know, are you guys putting ladders on buildings going up to do inspections?
If you're talking, John, you're still muted.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, we carry that ladder in the backseat of the car all the time. We use it quite often doing stuff, but we have to get around and look at things. You know, if we have to go higher than that, we usually use equipment on site. I would say maybe six or seven times a year, I have to go up an extension ladder higher than that, but usually they have some kind of temporary stairs or something put in for us to get around, to get access for our inspections. But we do the stuff, and we have a bunch of handouts, material, and so we can show people that call when they question it.
Okay, so you're, you're probably talking like a, a four-foot ladder?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I know the size of a four-foot ladder and the size of a compact car. I do know that you could put a ladder in there. So, I, I'm going to say to the board, that's how I feel on mine. But, you know, it's, we're a board of five. Do we have a motion to either accept John's? What was that?
Okay, the, the reason why there would be an issue with the compact car is there's places that we go in the winter and some of the roads that we have to go on that a compact car wouldn't necessarily have enough ground clearance to where we'd be dragging on the bottom.
On sixty mile a road still.
I get it.
Okay, well.
I'd like to make a motion to replace eleven-year-old building department vehicle by purchasing a base model twenty twenty-one Equinox from Hilltop Chevrolet, or up to twenty-five thousand dollars using surplus funds from the two thousand twenty-one operating budget coded to the incident fund.
Second that motion.
Roll call vote?
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
So, Koshai. Okay, next up on the list.
Uh, before, question, Mister Chair, should we consider having that undercoated? I don't know if we still do that or not. I know the vehicles, the last two vehicles I bought, my personally, I had them undercoated. Do you think it'd be wise if we had that?
I, I think.
I don't know. I'm just asking. It's an outright assault.
Yeah, well, let, let's take a look. Let's see, get a look. I know he had listed the specs, but you know, the frames are usually painted nowadays, so.
Okay.
Select person air real quick.
I personally think we'd get a better deal than, not deal to, ever done a maintenance. We'd get a better quality job.
Okay, well, when, when we purchase the vehicle, it comes up and, you know, Mister Huckings looks at what we need to address with that vehicle, we'll go from there. But next up on the list is the Police Department Staffing Plan and the twenty twenty-two budget considerations. And coming to the mic is Chief Joy.
Uh, Mister Chair, while he gets set up and gets the presentation going, similar to, to the approach that we took with the Fire Department, the real goal here with the select board and the community is to present what the chief and I and, and others in the depart, in the Police Department feel are the, the objectives necessary to maintain success in the Police Department. And so, the priority is really to get the select board the information that they need to also support that objective, to support the goal that we have, specifically being the, the dual patrol coverage twenty-four seven with staffing, you know, to be able to fill for vacations and trainings, illnesses and all the rest. And so, the chief, and, and I know he had help within the department, did a fantastic job putting this presentation together, but keep in mind, that's the goal. We'd like to include something in the twenty twenty-two budget with the select board's support. And as I indicated in, in my town administrator report, I support the objective. I support the chief's recommended path to get there. And if you have any other budget questions unrelated to the operations of the Police Department, I'd be happy to hear them. Thank you.
So, what I'm presenting is nothing new. For the folks that have been around, you've heard this before. In twenty eighteen, some of you were sitting there, I mean, not so much, but some of you were sitting here in twenty eighteen when Chief Williams presented. You're going to see a lot of the same material, quite frankly, because I wasn't going to recreate the wheel. When we did this in twenty eighteen, the numbers told us that we should be at about thirteen point five, currently not. And Chief Williams prepared the board then for coming back in twenty twenty-ish for another person. Clearly, we didn't do that. I did not do that because of the circumstances we were presented with, so here we are now. Going back before Chief Williams, for those of you who are here in two thousand, definitely not you. And what I have in my hand is the December thirty-first, two thousand town Barrington annual report. Couple of you might remember that. Chief Conway prepared the report, and I'll just quote from the manual. "The staff's been extremely busy this past year. National averages for police coverages are one officer for every five hundred people. We have an improved staff of seven full-time and one part-time officers serving a town of over sixty-five hundred people. The staffing shortage frequently results in delayed response due to necessity to prioritize calls. We understand that every incident is important to the reporting caller, and we attempt to deal with the calls as soon as possible when received. We are dealing with a situation and a problem that is in excess of twenty-one years old." So, that's the historics. So, the objective spelled out. Again, I know everybody's had time to review it, so I'm not going to kill everybody reading everything. My objective is to maintain double coverage and patrol all shift seven days a week. That's not really too much to ask. There's the mathematic breakdown. That's three hundred and thirty-six patrol hours. Currently, with part-time, with full-time personnel, we can cover two hundred and eighty. It's fifty-six hours difference for those doing the math. The addition of one is not going to make it. Our part-time and the per diem gets us close if everybody is working and everybody is present. So, again, that's if everybody is working and everybody is present, not vacations, sick time, training or admin. And admin is important throughout this. Justification, we'll see these slides in order, demographics, staffing surveys, prior staffing recommendations, staffing deficiencies and the current activity levels and demands on staff. Going to have a lot of fun with that one. It's not in the presentation today. Town of Barrington, hundred ninety-eight point four persons per square mile of land area. Barrington has forty-seven, forty-six point seven square miles. Eighty-five seventy-six was the population in the twenty-ten census. We are now at ninety-three twenty-six for the current population. Personally feel that Barrington may have had some unresponsive folks. I would have kept my life if it were over ten thousand, but that's neither here nor there. That shows an eight point seven percent increase over the decade, and those are our major state routes. It about two, two, see that ladder. Barrington Police Department staff, myself, Chief Police, Deputy Chief Brooks is seated behind me, two patrol supervisors currently, one detective. Excuse me, two slot patrol officers, one detective, six point five patrol officers beyond those. So, on the street, we have eight point five folks right now. As it stands, the supervisor spot that was approved, the classification, we patrol Detective Sergeant Barber, filter detective share. P D Officer Trends, we're going to work backwards. We are currently eleven point five. In twenty eighteen, we reached that number, thanks to a couple of you gentlemen that are sitting on the board right now. Thank you. Two thousand eight to twenty eighteen, nothing. We remain flat at ten point five. Two thousand five to two thousand eight, we were nine point five. I am using two thousand five as the number based on the budget increase that I found in the town reports. That jives with my memory, and that makes sense. If I am off by a year, I will apologize in advance. I did that based on numbers. Chief Conway, prior to that, was nice enough to include in his narrative where we were at. Two thousand two to two thousand five, eight point five people. Two thousand, two thousand two, seven point five. So, what you see back then is a trend every three years of increasing one officer. There's our population versus police officers, just a nice little diagram there to show you what we have. There's the up. The dots represent the efficient and the increase in population. You'll note the flat trend from two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen. One up in two thousand eighteen, and we have been flat for the last three years. That's our full-time equivalent to one thousand population that T A. McIver was nice enough to prepare for me. And again, you can see the downward trend in that graph. I'm happy to stop, Mister Air. Absolutely.
I thought we were at twelve and a half. Are you telling the officers that we're down or?
No, sir. We are at eleven and a half total.
That's who it's been. I thought it was twelve.
And just to clear, we should be at thirteen, according to the.
At least.
Chief Williams.
At least. Staffing by population. So, you're going to see highlighted here, this is down through. The full-time officers, I have confirmed with the respective departments. I don't know where I lost on side. The populations differed. Again, there's some back and forth when I, when I texted the chiefs and talked to them about their full-time officers. They also cut me a population. The populations were off a little bit, so if you look on the right-hand side, I took everything off the New Hampshire Employment Security site. I figured that was a safe basis for populations. So, everything is consistent. The one lone exception is our ninety-three twenty-six. I took that from our current census. The other numbers are from just prior. So, there probably is an uptick, uptick in their populations as well that's unaccounted for. I just wanted to be transparent. Yes, sir.
Uh, when you get to Durham, does that include the offices at U N H?
No, sir. That is Durham Police Department. I did not include the University of New Hampshire. Yes, the University Police Department is a fully certified police department. They operate under the policing authority of Chief Kelly in the town of Durham. But if you added the U N H P D in there, at least another twenty strong, give or take. And then part-timers.
Thank you.
So, you'll see, if you look down through the full-time for one thousand residents, again, it's just a quick stand down through the town of Barrington, despite the fact that we're one of the largest land masses, has the smallest full-time for one thousand resident. We are in fact well under the county average of one point seven eight.
Okay, is there any comments, questions from the board?
Stratford was part of Barrington. It's exactly the same square miles.
Okay, I didn't know the square mileage was the same. Yes, I knew they used to be part of Barrington. So, the town of Stratford currently is budgeted for six. Their population, you can see, they average one point four two tops per thousand versus our one point one seven.
You know, you, you always bring good quality. Let me start over. The way you presented this was awesome, as most of your presentations are. You know, those numbers are concerning. I mean, if you look at Durham, Durham was probably the closest population that was over. They had the, the sixteen officers for, or what was it, just there?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one officers for sixteen thousand people. We're, we're at nine thousand. We only have eleven. And even at Farmington, they have fourteen officers with, with almost seven thousand.
I, I want to go back one, Dan, because you said twelve. We have twelve bodies in the Police Department, and I want to be transparent about that.
Maybe it was Katie.
Uh, no, we counted Scott, part-time, point five. And you'll, you'll see me refer to eleven point five, Scott's eight point five, even though Scott is a full person.
I know. I thought we were at twelve.
My apologies. Now I just thought that. Yeah, no, I, I, these studies are based on full-time and full-time equivalents, so I wanted to clarify that before we went on, and I do apologize for interrupting.
Select person Bailey?
Thank you. I just want to add your last comment. The demographic graphics for Durham is a lot different. For the large university contingency and everything else, it's not really including the population. I know you have U N H, but when you come off campus, I don't know how the chief there handles the U N H Police Department, how he integrates in with the problems in, in town. I don't know that. So, I mean, so I think that all the students, it makes it, makes it change. So, at one point two eight population, you know, I still, I still see where we're going, so.
So perfectly good reason. That's why I brought up Farmington, where they're a smaller town, smaller population than us, almost a two thousand, a little over two thousand difference. And they have fourteen officers compared to our eleven. So, I think we've kind of, you know, hit all, you know, aspects of this. This was just a discussion. There's no vote needed on this. Final discussion from, from the board, select person air. Yeah.
Well, one thing about Farmington.
Well, it's going to go back to you, so.
Our history. Here it can be a farm day, because back in the day, they had some issues there, a lot more than issues Barrington had. That's why they had that police force.
Our call volume is higher than that of Farmington.
Okay.
Now, not that.
Back in the day.
Excuse me?
It'd be interesting, not only for us, because we have it here, but for the public, if we let Troy finish his presentation, I think the transparency as far as the public is concerned.
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to have a decade's worth of activity for you guys, and I apologize. That is an unwieldy process. If, if it is necessary, I can certainly gather that data for the last decade, but I meant to have. Average-wise, what we just saw was averages in Stratford County nationally, and I'm going to include two numbers here, and this is going to kind of play on later on in the graphs. We currently have a population ninety-three twenty- We currently have a population ninety three twenty six. So the DOJ, uh, the Department of Justice for the Northeast New England sets officer averages per thousand. And what you have for jurisdiction is less than ten thousand, which is where we fit. The DOJ will tell you we should have two point eight per thousand. Where we are so close and I have tried to give the town the benefit of the doubt in all cases. If you look at the DOJ averages for towns above ten thousand, we're right there, we're knocking on ten thousand. They're point one nine. So what I did again, just for the sake of argument is I averaged those together and instead of rolling with the point, the point, the two point eight average or the one point nine. You'll see the difference, twenty six point eleven for the first number, seventeen point seven for the second. I averaged those together and came out with twenty one point nine one. Again, given the benefit of the doubt to the town. Clearly I am not here asking for ten coppers. That's not my intent, um, but I want to show you where the DOJ tells us where we should be at. Get too trigger happy here. So the New Hampshire DOJ average is two point eight two. Uh, again, that is taken off twenty nineteen UCR tail seventy seven. It's referenced, it's on their website, it's a federal number. If we look at that number, twenty six point two nine is the number. Clearly I'm not here asking for fifteen cops. UNH Carcy, um, this was a study done back in twenty fifteen. I've seen no update from them, so I'm using their old numbers. By UNH Carcy's numbers in Stratford County, we should have fifteen point eight five. They're approximately one point seven per thousand. So again, UNH Carcy did this study prior. I feel that's a pretty good rate. And if you remember that fifteen point eight five number, I'll show you why I think that's a good number here shortly. Bartel formula, Dan remembers the Bartel formula, I believe George will remember the Bartel formula. I'm not going through it again. You, I hope by now you trust my addition and my numbers. The Bartel formula is not generic, which is what we've just been through, those are averages. Bartel formula is specific to jurisdictions based on activity, uh, based on time off for employees, based on schedules. This is a mathematical equation to get us where we need to go. We went through it all back in twenty eighteen. If you don't trust me, I've got the numbers, I'm happy to show them to you. I'm hoping you just trust me. I compared and contrasted calls for service, so you can see the difference. Two thousand sixteen, which is where we based our numbers for the two thousand eighteen study, we had eight thousand one hundred and eighteen calls for service minus motor vehicle stops. Last year we had ten thousand seven hundred and thirty. Motor vehicle stops, twenty sixteen, twenty five eighty two, I don't know what that five is at the end. Twenty five eighty two, I don't know where that other five came from, we did not have twenty five thousand stops. Last year we had twenty five oh nine, difference of about eighty. Last year, first few months of the year, when we came into COVID, we got back on motor vehicle because we didn't know if COVID was transferring on driver's licenses or any of that stuff. So we had a several month period, we weren't doing a lot of motor vehicle. I will tell you this year, we are on track to do in excess of thirty two hundred motor vehicle stops. So I'm still going to leave that twenty five number up there. It is data, it is the data we have to work with, I just wanted to explain it. Index related investigations, seventy two versus eighty one. Those are the serious crimes that you really want folks investigating, sexual assaults, child pornography, burglaries, robberies, all that kind of stuff. Non-index investigations, two ten to two seventeen. We're going to talk specifically about those here in a minute too. So when we did staff in twenty eighteen, the staffing requirement not including the chief of police showed us thirteen point five. Now it's showing sixteen point three four. That is why I think this is relatively accurate. I'm within one cop on both studies. And I'm still not here asking for five. So.
Ten, right?
Uh, what's that?
It's ten.
Yeah, originally it was ten. So the Bartel formula, if it'll advance here for me. Go back one. The Bartel formula took into account those index versus non-index crimes. And I want to get into that for a minute. Showing up on my screen, there we go. When we do this formula, the index related investigations, uh, we figure an average of five hours per investigation. Five. That's what we base the formula off of, that's where we get our numbers from. I'm here to tell you right now that today, today. Detective Sergeant Barber drew a case yesterday and arrest was made and an investigation continues. She spent four hours this morning doing a search warrant for that case because it involved a computer. She spent the rest of her afternoon today working on that case. We figure five hours per investigation, Detective Sergeant Barber has almost ten hours today into one case and she's not even started. We just turned the case over to the secret service involving a fraud in town. It has man weeks of investigation invested into it, not five hours. Uh, I have a theft sitting on my desk right now that unfortunately I had to apologize to lady last week for triaging calls. But I have a few hours into just a couple right now, or two, two and a half hours. And I'm nowhere near completion and I had to call that lady last week and let her know that I was only halfway through it because of prioritizing calls. Five hours is what we have used for the number. Five hours doesn't even get us started in a lot of these investigations. A basic burglary with no leads, we will spend that amount of time on just following up with pawn shops and everything else. If folks want me to put just five hours of investigation into an assault, be happy to do it. No, I wouldn't. So there's your basic breakdown comparison from twenty eighteen study to today, uh, with the population overlay. Population's done nothing but go up. Your green line, again, so there's that drop, that's the green line I was talking about, that's the DOJ New England. We didn't average that last time, so that is the one factor that we see a drop in. I guess it doesn't much matter because it's still up over twenty. Every other indicator has gone up except the little red line, which is our staff. There's population versus cops. There's where the Bartel formula shows us we should be, that nice flat line is where we are, the blue line is the population. This document was not prepared by me. This is the. Why that's overlaid with the Bartels one? Nope, it's not, I'm sorry. This wasn't prepared by me, I was hoping that Chairman Knapp was going to be here today because his name was on this document. Some, this was prepared sometime in about twenty eighteen and some of you other gentlemen may be able to educate me a little bit on what it is. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it was not prepared with me, this was prepared before my time. And again, I'm just going to quote from that based on the work that was done for this study and put in print in this document, which is online. Based on four police staffing summaries, the US DOJ Northeast New England Average, US Department of Justice, New England Average, Carcy School, and Bartel Formula. The town should increase the police department to include sixteen full time sworn officers. Just short of two per one thousand within the next five to ten years. So if this was prepared in twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen, which I recall, we are now four to five years deep. Sixteen. This should include two additional patrol sergeants, two additional patrol sergeants, one school resource officer and two patrol officers. Determine if the funding set for twenty twenty to cover the school resource officer, fifty percent school, fifty percent economic, feasible and responsible approach and plan accordingly. That's kind of not really relevant at this point, they went a different direction. Monitor Barrington's population growth over the next five to ten years and determine if additional detective sergeant position is needed. Thank you, I took care of that a couple of weeks ago and I appreciate it, so thank you guys for that, folks. Uh, determine what social and rehabilitative services which could reduce the reliance of police force and help address some of the underlying causes of crime could benefit from additional funding. That has to do with a lot of mental health, which select will remember Mantrick and I have been back and forth about, so we're also working on that. I've kind of done my part on C and D. Staffing deficiencies. This is July twenty one, twenty twenty one to present. We had forty one open patrol shifts. About fifty percent of those were backfilled. That means you had twenty one patrol shifts that were not backfilled. That does not mean the town was not covered, we had coverage. We did not have sufficient coverage. At least twelve of those night shifts were left partially or completely single coverage. Uh, scheduled single coverage from zero six to fourteen currently, Sunday, Monday and Tuesday, and from zero six to sixteen on Wednesday. Uh, those are open, those are single coverage. Right now I am the second unit Monday through Wednesday. Last week I was the single unit from Sunday, Monday and Tuesday, it was me. There it is, it's up there. From twenty ten to twenty fifteen, our average level of patrol was eighteen years. Twenty nineteen, six point one years. Today it's just about four. I'm not taking anything away from my staff, I have a fantastic staff. Police officers working in this town. A patrolman or lady with four to five years of experience cannot accomplish what a copper with eighteen years on the job can. It just can't do it, they don't have the breadth of knowledge. So when you asked me why we were able to do what we were able to do, two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen. That's why we were able to do it for the first five years of that decade. Because we were dealing with cops that had been around for literally decades. Calls and staff impact, so this is a slide and we're going to go off the reservation a little bit here and I'll apologize upfront. Right now we have two hundred and one arrests to date, last year was a hundred and eighty three total, so we're already above that. To date, sixty four seventy seven total calls for the first half of the year. Last year we did thirteen two thirty nine, so we're going to beat that. June thirtieth, twenty one, twenty one to present, seventy UI arrests. We had a reckless conduct involving firearm where the individual discharged that firearm during the course of confrontation. We've had six domestic violence arrests to include a stabbing, strangulation, uh, firearm involved with a potential standoff. And one domestic violence incident on Scruton Pond Road that I handled without backup. Ended fine, no problem, but none of those calls up there should be a single cop call. And I'm here to tell you right now that beyond that one domestic violence that I singled out, there were, there were calls up in that list that were handled by one cop. I will say flat out that the firearm involved with the potential standoff. Did a phenomenal job with it, Officer Courier was the first one on scene. And when he arrived on scene, I was between Peach Farm and the launch. So in the time that it took me to get to the backside of the lake, Officer Courier was on scene alone. And I'll tell you that I was driving to get there with a purpose. Staffing impact, uh, single unit response eliminates use of force options. So when we go to fill in the blank, and I'm going to use mentally disturbed individual with potentially suicidal tendencies. When one person goes to that call, we have no use of force options. If there is an individual with a knife threatening to kill himself, that cop has a gun. That's it. If we have two units responding to that, we can have a lethal force and a less lethal force alternative. I can have a cop utilizing a taser with lethal force backup and hopefully we can de-escalate that situation and talk them down. The same goes for a one unit response, but we're taking away alternatives in that one unit response, which goes against everything that we're trying to accomplish right now in the world. We're trying to de-escalate everything, we're trying to have more services available so we don't have to do that. My ultimate goal would be not to have the cops respond at all in a perfect world, somebody else could deal with that, but it's not going to happen. Probably not in my career. Reduced level of experience, most officers required to handle a wider variety of calls, that speaks for itself, I've already spoke to that. Prior practice is not best practice and I'll blame myself for this and I'll blame an entire generation of cops. What we used to do, domestic violence by ourselves was stupid. I learned in nineteen ninety nine, if you don't go to a domestic violence call by yourself, you know what I did for the first part of my career? I went to domestic violence calls by myself, because that's what we had to work with. That is unacceptable to me now as a boss. Uh, I know that was unacceptable to Chief Conway, I know that was unacceptable to Chief Williams as well, but to me, I'm going to stand here, I'm going to sit here in the public and I'm going to tell you that that is unacceptable. Staff concerns and surrounding agencies make mutual aid less reliable in the past. So I guess we're going to trend into this weekend now. Saturday night should have been a single coverage night from eighteen hundred on. From eighteen hundred to midnight, it was going to be one unit, from midnight to six AM was going to be me. So we split a shift, single coverage. One of my officers was kind enough after having drill, volunteered to come in for five hours, so we had double coverage for a portion of that shift. What I received was a call at eight PM saying we had a couple of calls going on in the town of Barrington. Dug a little further into dispatch and those couple of calls were barricaded subject in a fatal collision on Route two oh two. So on a night we may have had one guy on, one staff member, we had a barricaded subject and a fatal collision. Thankfully, the town of Stratford didn't have any calls going and they were able to provide assistance as they often do. So we had a couple of Stratford guys to come down and help us. It's not always going to be the case right now. Everybody's short, Stratford is one unit short, Rochester's down quite a few, I don't know how many, Dover's down quite a few. That's not always going to be there and we were lucky, we were very lucky. Otherwise I've got one guy to standoff and one guy to fatal, again, not okay with that. I got the phone call and I was here within twenty minutes, but that's twenty minutes. Hiring, retention and morale, it's big because what's going to happen if we're not staffed appropriately is exactly what has been happening. My workers are going to continue to work overtime, they're going to continue to work eighteen, nineteen hour stretches, they're going to burn out. And they're going to leave and they're going to go somewhere else, not just for money, but for quality of life. Staffing solution for FY twenty twenty two, I'd like to budget for one additional patrol officer, nine months, starting April one. That gets us through voting. Let's let the voters weigh in on this, if I can get your support, let's let the voters have their say on the budget. In addition to the single F T patrol officer, under fully staffed conditions, will allow me to meet the stated staffing goal in most circumstances. I'm also here to tell you that we are going to have to reevaluate this in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. Because we're adding one, which doesn't get us anywhere near what we need to be, I'm asking to add one this year because I know what we're under for stress. I understand the COVID concerns. COVID didn't slow anything down for the Barrington Police Department. COVID increased some of our call loads. COVID increased the type of our call loads. Domestic violence did not decrease last year during COVID, drunks did not decrease last year during COVID. That's what I'm hoping you folks will support. We're going to have to reevaluate this, I'm asking for one, not five, not ten. Annual cost for the year is eighty seven two thirty four. From the April first, twenty twenty two start date, it'd be sixty five four twenty five. That's almost six cents per thousand. But the addition of the per diem, that's going to help us pick up a little slack to begin with. It's not going to get everything done. Again, foundation for this was laid in twenty eighteen and before, any measure we want to talk about statistically, we are understaffed. This is impacting services, impacting operations, this is impacting how we deal with our citizens, my employers. That's all I really have. I will also mention offhand, and this is not in the presentation, that was not by any means something I meant to do. I was advised last night that I am going to lose one of my employees more than likely in March of twenty twenty two. We have an employee that is National Guard, he had planned on a twenty twenty three activation. He was told by his CO, Colonel, who probably isn't going to listen to the chief of police, that he is likely going in March of twenty twenty two. So this addition that we are going to add hopefully in, I'm sorry to, um, that we're hoping to add essentially will cover that spot while he's gone. And then I'll have my full staff back in twenty twenty three when he arrives home. Um, and, and I'll apologize to the TA because I didn't even have a chance to talk to the TA about this, this came out of nowhere at me. So with the addition of the per diem, if we're able to go where we go tonight, I'm going to be maintaining essentially current level. Through twenty twenty three.
Select person Bailey.
That call up, how long is that for, is that just training or is that for?
Nope, that's up to a year, um, is the, it was phrased.
I know, I was hoping it wasn't a year, but.
Yep, that is, that is up to a year and, and I'm happy to send the young man, he's a fantastic cop, I'm going to miss him, but he's a fantastic soldier too. So they have a need of him and we'll make do, I'll make do, but that's just another layer to this situation that I'm, I'm letting folks know about. Happy to entertain questions.
You had brought up a school resource officer?
Yes.
Now, in your, when, when you're going through to do your reports and, and all your, uh, you know, possibilities.
Yep.
Do you already have a plan to say if, you know, if the school were, were to entertain to have a school resource officer? You know, how that would play into the school as in like, I, I would understand, my understanding of it would be the resource officer does, you know, at some time at the school. But is also able to come back to the, the PD work, uh, you know, at the overtimes, whether, you know, at P, uh, every source needs them and or if somebody calls out on a shift because they need to get somewhere early, that person can cover that.
So I can sort of speak intelligently to this, uh, this research was all done by Chief Williams and it, it kind of died on the vine. The model I would use for school resource officer is similar to what Durham would use. So you've got your, your individual in the school, they do their time in the school, but they are also available to backfill shifts. So if George Joey gets assigned to the school and Friday night we have a shift open, school resource officer isn't in the school Friday night. We could utilize that individual just like a patrol officer at that point in time. That would be the model I would look at, there are places out there where the school resource officer is paid by the school for the school year. And they don't often fill a lot of patrol, that's not the model I choose to follow. Right now we are existing in a social scenario where school resource officers are being questioned and they're present. are being questioned and their presence in the school is being questioned. Uh, we come from an area where school resource officers are very, very highly looked upon. Durham has had a very successful program for years. Dover's had a very successful program for years. Um, Patty and Co Brown is well-known to everybody and all the kids love and respect her. Um, so locally, we've got very good success rates. Actually, is another, another scenario. If the school wants to look at a school resource officer down the road, I'm happy to entertain that and have that conversation with them. My recollection, and please don't quote me on this, because I don't want to upset the superintendent, and I have a very good relationship. I'd be, the funds they were kind of looking at for the SRO went to a counselor, which was a very good use of those funds. Uh, if it's the, the young lady that I met last year, she does a fantastic job with the kids, and I don't second-guess that decision at all on his part. But certainly, I, I'm willing to open and have discussions and come stuff down the road.
Okay, so just to let the board know why I asked that question, um, you know, and my feeling and seeing the report that Chief George did for us is, you know, we know that we're down officers, uh, but also, if you guys recall, uh, you know, it wasn't necessarily during school hours, but there was a, not a altercation, but there was an issue at one of the meetings. And, um, you know, it made one of, uh, the school board members uncomfortable. And, um, you know, being able to maybe combo in with that, um, to not only get you maybe, you know, at that one officer you're looking for, but maybe, you know, if we can get another half to, to at least help out, that's where I was going with that thinking. Um, but if you, if the board is all set, Connor, if you don't have anything, um, I'm, we look forward to working with you on this, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Who we can do for you.
Any other questions before I stand up, vacate my seat?
No, I'm just going to wait till you stand up.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, thank you. Chief Joy did a fantastic job, and I would urge the select board and any community members that are watching. Um, this presentation, it was recorded. We have the video. The slides are available on the town's website. Um, you know, Chief Joy intends, and and I support, the budgeting for an additional full-time position. Um, that will be part of the budget process in the budget presentation, and I think for a lot of residents, the headline might just be that the police department's asking for a budget increase. And so I would urge anybody that you folks interface with or members of the community that are watching at home, um, encourage residents that question the need for an additional officer or additional officers to pull up this presentation. Um, the link will, the link to start right at the beginning of this presentation will be included in the minutes. Um, and and the chief, as you know, you just sat through, did an absolutely fantastic job, um, laying out all the justification, everything that's gone into this, um, this proposal. Um, so thank you, Chief Joy, and and like I said, please, please share this presentation with the folks that might question the need.
Okay, um, well, while we got you, Connor, uh, next up on the list is the twenty twenty financial audit review. Um, do you want to speak a little bit on that?
Yes, so, uh, each select board member has a bound copy of the twenty twenty, uh, financial report. Um, a full copy electronically is available on the town's website as well. You'll remember that we changed auditors this year, um, after five years with Ashon Kuque, uh, to keep with best practices, have a new set of eyes looking at our financials, uh, make sure we catch everything. And so, um, the, I provided a link in my report to the, uh, process we went through to select, uh, Plodzik and Sanderson, which is who we worked with this year, hit the ground running. The financial audit closed a couple of months before last year. We intend to speed that up again next year and years moving forward. Brass Tacs, um, they had essentially six recommendations, um, that they worked with us on through the entire process. Things that they saw, um, that, that they, you know, identified, other communities, uh, doing it a little better, a little cleaner, room for improvement, if you will. Um, so we worked collaboratively with them, um, through their entire audit on each of these six items. Um, I provided notes on each. Um, you know, a lot of it is just the, the, the backup, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's, making sure that we have good reconciliations and good records, um, for any time questions come forward. Um, so myself and the, the finance administrator, uh, were very supportive of the recommendations. Look forward to working with their guidance to implement them. Um, and I, I guess the only last thing that I'll mention is, you know, we, um, the end of the financial year, we estimate what the, our expenditures and our revenue are going to be. Um, and those don't really become final until the financial audit is closed. Um, and I'm happy to report that within less than ten thousand, I don't know if it was quite less than five thousand, but, um, with, with very high precision, with a very high accuracy, I should say, um, we anticipated where our, our close would be. Um, and so all the numbers that I presented during the budget process last year, uh, with estimated tax rate impact and all the rest, uh, still hold true, which is fantastic. So happy to answer any questions.
Look, person air.
Long as I have been a selectman, it's recommended from the, uh, Mr. Bailey thing that we do audits when individuals leave. So over the years, I mean, half those people left, different departments and stuff, and then we only do the, any, there's, there's just, uh, hard to be done. We have never done that. I don't know if we're doing the future or not, and the last people did our things. I wasn't too impressed with them, because it was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars off in the conservation budget for over ten years, and that didn't ju- that was, that was nothing, that's a lot of money to make.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I have to look, he asked for help to look at this more clearly, uh, so I understand it, um, as a simple farmer. Thank you.
Great. Um, any other comments from the board? Okay, moving on, um, use of ARPA funds, public safety building generator discussion. Um, Connor, when I was reading these notes real quick, um, there was a first I'm seeking. I just wanted to make sure that that was not you, and maybe it was Chief Walker?
I know it was me.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I on behalf of the town, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so do you want to touch on this as well, and then the board can chime in with some questions?
Absolutely. Um, so one important clarification, uh, the chair and I had a chance to talk earlier today. Uh, I want to be clear that the, the purpose of this conversation right now is just to get a nod from the select board if they're willing to use this funding source for this purpose. So if that's the case, then the process we would go through to acquire this generator would, uh, follow the purchasing policy, follow the best practices, um, and the, uh, procurement requirements of the ARPA funds, starting with, uh, an engineered, um, um, approach to determining what our needs are, not just now, but in the future, for power at the public safety building facility, um, and also designing specifications to advertise all the rest. Um, so that said, that aside, you'll remember, um, back in March, we identified the need for an automatic start generator, um, as a vulnerability of the public safety building. Um, most notably because we rely so much on power with our data and our phones and communication in general, um, that without power at that facility, um, operations are really halted. Um, now, we have a generator, which is great, but during a critical incident, you want your people out responding, whatever that incident is, not starting the generator, manning the generator, making sure it stays going. So, um, that's why it was identified as a vulnerability. Um, we ballparked, um, working with, um, our electrician record and a local generator contractor, about thirty-five thousand. Um, Chair Sikosha thinks that might be low, and it very well may be. Uh, but I wanted to at least get a, a order of magnitude, a, a scale for the select board to consider, um, so you know what we're looking at here. Um, so as far as the funding source, you'll remember these ARPA funds, it'll be a million dollars over two years, five hundred thousand this year, five hundred thousand next year. Um, unfortunately, these funds are pretty restricted in how the town, how the select board is able to use them for the town. Um, and so I don't think we'll have any problems spending the money over the, the next few years. Um, but this is the first one that, that, you know, the light bulb clicked on me. This is a great use of these funds for this purpose. I talked to the, the folks at the governor's office, um, for, uh, resource and recovery, Gopher, um, to verify that it was an eligible expense. And so, um, I, I hope to have your support to use these funds for this purpose. And if so, we'll proceed with the, um, getting the project engineered and advertised. Happy to answer questions, and either Chief Walker or Chief Joy can chime in on the, the need or the justification for the project.
Yeah, I, they say we need a generator, um, and I couldn't agree more. Um, I've actually talked with, uh, Chief Walker on this, um, and I know this is just, you know, to, to re-go over it again. This is just to use the funds to, to go forward with this project, uh, necessarily that thirty-five thousand isn't the solid number that they're going to be going off or, or after. Um, it was just simply to get a figure in front of you. Um, with that being said, does the, the board have any questions, concerns? Select person Bailey?
Thank you. Several years ago, uh, ancient history, I was involved with, uh, the survey, take it in town, see how many establishments had a generator, just in case we had to, uh, use it as an emergency facility. And, uh, Chief Walker correctly, I think we had, what, seven or eight facilities that had a generator to come back on. Now, these include restaurants, uh, Georgia's gas station, which is no longer Georgia's gas station. We had a very, very low number, and we worked trying to get a, uh, generator, and it got turned down. I think that not only should we be looking at, uh, uh, that there, I would ask Connor if it's possible to use those funds for, uh, the new town hall. And those funds we use to provide that, because that's where going to be put our emergency, uh, start point, or what, what do you call it, emergency, uh?
Operations center.
Operating, operation center, and you know that, when, when it, when it comes time to get, get fresh water, a, a lot of the people in, uh, our community have wells, and they don't, uh, have a, uh, generator. And, uh, but he goes down to the fire station, uh, at least I used to until I got a generator put in, so I didn't have to do it anymore. But I think that's, uh, something else that, if it was possible, be considered, because I know that, uh, if something catastrophic, uh, came around here, there would be, uh, a lot of people looking for some help. Uh, I, I was just coming to the board to look at, uh, one also.
Okay, that, that'll be noted, um, you know, uh, no, I just want to get back on track, so, so we, so we don't lose, lose focus.
It was on track, I know. Go ahead.
Well, to, well, town hall, that, that's, you know, that was a whole different thing. This is for the public safety building. So that's, that's was my opinion on that. Um, Chief, Chief George, Chief Walker, coming up, uh?
Speak for Rick and myself. He'll call, tag team in afterwards. Um, from an EOC standpoint, um, absolutely, the town hall needs a generator for the EOC, um, because the EOC is going to be operating out of there. I, and not by you folks, but by, I think, the general public. EOC, PD, FD, if there's an emergency, the FD and the PD is going to be over at the EOC. Incorrect. Um, if there's a major emergency, and I know you gentlemen know this because you've been involved in them, if we have a critical incident, if we have a major issue, I'm going back to my house. Uh, and I'm doing my business from my house, because that's where all my equipment is. That's where everything I need. That's where all my forms are. That's where all my templates are. Everything I need to exist is going to be at, at the PD. Uh, if we have a natural disaster, clearly, we're going to have the EOC setup that needs to be powered with a generator, and we're going to have a designated there. But during the course of that natural disaster, even though we have somebody at the EOC, we're going to be conducting our business from the police department. Uh, when we have a, God forbid, a shooting, I need my house operational, because that's where we're going. That's where the state police are going to help us out. That's where everybody's going. Chief Walker has a major incident. He's not opening the EOC. He's working out of his house, because that's where his equipment is, and that's where all his information bases. And again, I'm not telling you folks anything you don't know, but for the folks at home that kind of may think we're going to the EOC to do all this, not. EOC is a component. We need our houses in order. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Can you make a correction? When you say housed, that means your department?
The police department.
Your department?
Yes, um, yes. When I refer to my house, I'm referring to the police department, my side of the house, yes.
You go to your house, the city.
Uh, I, you know what? I may go home, too. Um, yes, my apologies. When I referred out.
But the bike, probably my missing driver.
Yeah, no, when I refer to my house, I apologize. I am referring to the police department down. Seems like I spend more time there than I do at my own home anyway, so I guess it's, I'll get out of Rick's way, because.
And, and just to go on, on record, that's, and I do agree with your standpoint about the town hall. I just want to get off that.
No, we, no, we wouldn't. It's just the idea that I want to see if that money, my question was to Connor, check to see if that money could be used there also. I mean, because.
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
I mean, that survey was taken when, uh, what's her name? It was a lady. I can't remember her name.
Mr. Bailey, uh, to your point about the generator at the town hall, we have a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant, um, that we're in the process of, uh, applying for, and it's a, it's a shoe-in, if, if such a thing exists for a grant through FEMA for generator, um, at the public state, or at the, um, town hall for the emergency operations center. So we will have funding available. If for some reason that falls through, we could consider this, um, but to answer that question directly, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Chief Walker?
Two things you want to, because I want to reiterate what you were made aware of in March. One is not having the capability of an auto start. So again, at two o'clock in the morning of the, of the public safety bill, and the police officer's out on patrol, and nobody knows the power's out there until the police officer goes back to the station and, and tries to determine, hey, there's no power. So at which point, I'm going to get a phone call. It's going to take me ten minutes to get across town to get over there and fire the generator. That's, you know, in a public safety standpoint, yeah, or if in the middle of the day, wind damage, police are out, we're out. The secretary is on the police side working, the power goes out, and she has to wait until we can get somebody to come in. So it's definitely need an auto start. Uh, the other side of that is, is speaking to when the local contractor, taxpayer in town. Uh, I spoke to him. He does generators. Uh, he came down, gave me an idea of what we were going to be looking for from the replacement of a generator. And, and his thing was, he goes, chief, he says, they stopped making this generator about fifteen years ago. He says, there are no parts for the generator side of this unit. Um, we've had a few mechanical problems with it. It's basically a Perkins Diesel. Um, I had the luxury of having Phil Booty, that's been a diesel mechanic for years, that was able to find parts, because, um, you know, if you pull a manual out, and it tells you, it gives you a Chinese part number on the thing, it, sometimes it doesn't cross over. So, uh, but Mr. Noise from the generator connection says, he goes, chief, he says, your biggest problem is, is if there's some kind of a malfunction on the generating side of that unit, he says, you'll never get any parts. He says, so the, the building will be down. So that, that's pretty scary to think that, you know, if the generator goes down, we're going to be, you know, now we have to try to chase down a portable generator and then get a home electrician to come in and try to make the necessary changes so that we could use.
What would an ABT cost? Five seconds?
Like person air.
Uh, since I picked on Chief Joy, now I get to pick on you. Clarification, transfer switch, auto start.
Well, yes, you're right, transfer switch.
ABT.
Says, okay, it's a, it's an automatic transfer switch, ATS.
I think it's a new word.
Okay. Um, okay, so coming as select person air has a background in roads. I have a background in electrical. Um, as I stated before, I talked with Chief Walker. We went over the basics. So to get the facts out there, where, where undersized, uh, there's no automatic start. Um, there should be an engineering company involved when, um, we go to, uh, you know, if we move forward with this project, um, an engineering firm should be selected to come out to do a load test, um, to get a calculation of what we're using and talk with, um, Chief Walker and see where our future is headed, so we can plan to have a little bit more as additions happen to the building. Um, by having that engineer document, it's going to tell us the size of the generator we need, uh, the load predictions, what we have for a current load, uh, what size conduit, what size wire, and then it would go out to the, uh, request for a proposal, um, on the town's website, I'm sure. So, uh, that's what I know from my electrical standpoint, and I can put in for the town. Um, if, anybody have any other questions, comments? Great. Um.
So, Mr. Chair, um, do I, do I take that, that there's support from the board in pursuing this process, using these funds for this purpose, commissioning the engineering, getting a bid spec put together and advertised?
Yes.
I, I don't want to.
I withdraw an engineer.
We'll, we'll, we'll do a select person, man, sure.
Yeah. I think we're very, we're very concerned about reducing our taxes and all of this, hate to pay taxes, including. Hate to pay taxes, including me, but this is the safety of our community. And even if we can't get these ARPA funds, these are things that need to be done and it needs to be in our budget. And if it causes the tax to go up, that's the cost of of living in a in a safe place. So I think we we need to look at any source we can, but we need to get this done regardless of the source.
I I think I think our current situation right now is unacceptable. You know, and I'm not sure if we even have, you know, it is Chief Walker had riddled off, you know, we'd have to get an electrician and a generator here just to even have a backup. Let's say Hurricane Henry hits and, you know, we're in a disaster, then other generator quits, we can't get parts for it. Now we're scrambling in the middle of a natural disaster, trying to get a generator. Good luck. So yes, Connor, with that, I believe the board would like to go forward and seek the funds for this generator.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I think you should put a limit on engineer.
Okay, we could talk about that once we, you know,
It goes out the bit, I should be all.
Yeah, and that'll come up. This is just for the funding aspect. All the finer details will come into play at a later. Okay, next up, select select board member reports and concerns, starting with select person first.
I really want to know. I missed conservation. I was working, but then I said Saturday, we had a meeting with Townlands. And they approved the maintenance and stuff that we're going on. They're working hard on a challenging development. And they have a good good mindset and goal and they want to follow the same procedures as they did when they picked the Forrester. And we ended up with a real good Forrester and stuff, so evaluation, the points scoring, the way they did it. And I'm very proud of Townlands, how they came up with the Forrester. And I have faith they're going to come up with a good plan with this new development we're dealing with taxes. Thank you.
Excellent. Select person.
I have nothing to report. I had a condition, so I couldn't make the meetings.
Okay, select person man check.
I missed both the transfer station meeting and and the school board meetings. But the school board has some additional funds. And they had a survey that was unfortunately at noon today, they gave a short notice. There may be some funding coming. I got the minutes from the transfer station meeting. There's some concern that trash bags or prices may be changing and and Erin, I don't see her on our list here, but she's supposed to look that up. Composting, I talked to composting people and they say that Barrington is too small by itself. We have to look at some other sources. If there are other sources of composting materials, such as the restaurants or the schools, we may be able to put something down on the composting. The next meeting is on the 20th of September in Trent. And the ABC has its organization meeting the day after Labor Day on the 7th of September.
Okay, and it seems like we we've all been pretty busy these last couple of weeks. I haven't had a chance to reach out to Jesse from the recreational department. But as we know, the slides came up for a sealed bid, nobody bid on those. We gave Jesse the necessary approvals to donate to those people in need of the slides and or find a good home for them. Also, school's going to be starting back up. I believe summer camp is closing, if not closed already. Jesse is on the line. Can you think anything else I'm missing, Jesse?
I don't think so. I just wanted to update everybody and just let them know that our gym floor project was unfortunately postponed due to materials not being in on time. So we will be starting that project the Tuesday after Labor Day and shifting over to the town hall. But besides that, we're just, you know, continuing, we had a large software update. So we should see some improvements with the residents utilizing that. But besides that, we're just rocking and rolling.
Okay, and as we know, Chair Chairman Nap is not here to give his review. So with that, we're going to open up public comment.
Thank you very much. I just want to say to the board members, I'm very disappointed in the vote taken on the building permit. Thank you.
Select person air?
Daniel Air, 334 Old Conker Turnpike, simple person. But everyone wants Barrington to stay the same in the world, the country you live in. But what is society is changing itself and people demands, some people want everything in a city and stuff. So they're going to have to make a decision when it votes. I don't think it falls on me. Is with the expansion of the town, you want the city life, you're going to pay for it for everything or the town? So it's reflected in your tax bill, all these luxuries. So it's, I always spend the money, but it's going to be up to the taxpayers, what they want to do.
So if there's anybody participating via Microsoft Teams, you can raise your hand, put a comment in the chat box. I see we have one person participating on the phone. You can press star six if you'd like to wager a comment, wait to be recognized by the chair.
It's a couple of seconds here. Everybody chimes in?
Not seeing anything lighting up on my end, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, I would like to close public comment. Brings us down to line 13 on the agenda and there is no reason to my knowledge for a non-public session.
Perfect read. It's really perfect. Why is it not you?
With that being said, do I have a motion?
No.
To adjourn?
I'm ready to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Vote call vote, please.
Here I.
That's right.
Elliot.
Secosha. Thank you for attending the meeting.